First Zoom meeting of the winter, January. If if I see David pop in, I may go to him quickly, but as it stands right now. I'm going to just share my screen here. And that should be slot. Getting. That look OK?
Yep.
All right. We're gonna see my. Someone's joining. Let's see who that is. It's 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 gotta be Keith. It is. OK. This evening's agenda, I have a few announcements. We'll have a feature presentation from R A S C Winnipeg. Member Mike Karakas, who is not in Winnipeg right now. We'll have a five minute break and then we'll have what's up in the sky with Rick Wagner. I don't see Graham on the Zoom yet, but he did have a a report for us. He wants he has a C star report, so given our intention to purchase one, I was grateful that he accepted the invitation to do that. And so welcome any members, any new members of the center if we have any in attendance, but welcome to any guests that are just visiting. As usual, we have a Zoom social on Wednesday, which is an opportunity for members to chat and discuss what they're up to. An email with the Zoom invitation is posted to the center. Monthly meetings are Zoom only in January, February. And our next meeting is not January the eighth. I should have changed that. It's in February. Sorry. And that should say, that is right. On January the fourteenth, I'm going to be sending out a notice on email about the second astrophotography tutorial session. And we'll be focusing on equipment setup, basically, and all the little things that come along with that. And the monthly newsletter Regulus is out and it's Roger's second, but it can be found on the Kingston website. As mentioned at the last meeting and just a reminder for members, the the C star is coming to the R S C Kingston Center. We're in the purchasing phase of that, waiting for them to be in stock at a local retailer. They're a hot commodity right now, so haven't got it yet, but we intend to bring this to Queen's Open House, Science Rendezvous and other events and that's something that Graham is going to touch on, what the capabilities and the so on and so forth of the C star are. So without further ado, I will stop my share and I would like to welcome Mike Karakas from the Winnipeg Center, who's going to talk to us about planetary imaging and traveling to do so. It sounds like a very interesting topic. So the share is available when you're ready.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I'll see. I'm going to see about how I can share this. I'm just wearing a working on a fairly small laptop now. OK, that sounds good. I'm gonna try this one here and I'm just gonna start from here. Did everybody see that? OK, I don't want to make sure what I'm trying to do here. There we go. I'm trying to get my speaker notes in place. So could everybody see that? OK?
Yep.
OK, super. Just trying to arrange this. Pardon me. I'm just trying to arrange my view here a little bit. There we go. OK. This presentation is about a trip that my wife and I went on last last December, which is December twenty twenty three. And we usually do. We try to get away during the the winter months just to have a break from the cold temperatures because we do live in Winnipeg. And I wanted to. We wanted to do something like that, but this time around, it was wasn't to do your standard type all inclusive vacation, but instead it was to fulfill a lifelong dream of mine to go to a location with known excellent scene conditions. But planning a trip like this isn't without its set of own set of logistical challenges. Like first of all, you have to decide where to go and then where to stay. Because the world's a big place, so what criteria are you going to use to to narrow down your choices as to where you want to go? And and then just finding where to stay is its own set of little challenges too, because just booking a hotel like a hotel stay or in an apartment just doesn't want isn't going to cut it. You need some place to set up your gear. And then after that, you have to decide what equipment to take. Yeah, because planetary imaging isn't something done with small aperture scopes. So many of us love to use our sixty and seventy millimeter factors for deep sky imaging, but for planetary imaging, you need some sizable aperture. So that requires some some investment in terms of what how you're going to pack that. Then next, of course, you have to decide how you're going to pack every year, your 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 mount, tripod, the scope, of course. And then it has to survive the journey through the through the baggage handlers at airports, so which is not an easy feat. So basically, it took me about a year's worth of planning to work through these logistical challenges. And it's my hope that I can convince some of you at the end of this presentation to to consider a trip like this yourself, because the results were well worth the effort. Now, I guess the first question is, why would you want to travel to image the planets? Because planets are visible in our skies, so why go through all that bother? Well, if you ever look closely at where the best amateur planetary images have been taken, location wise, you'll notice a few things in common. First of all, they're always taken at a place where the planets are higher in elevation. Because the higher they are in the sky, the less atmosphere you can have to image through. And then you need to be near an ocean. Because the secret about being around ocean is that when air travels across the water for thousands, thousands of kilometers, it becomes very, very stable. And that stable laminar airflow is a key ingredient to wonderful seeing conditions. And then when you meet those two criteria with traveling to a low southern location, plus being near an ocean, you have all the ingredients you need to experience sub hour second seeing conditions, which is something that every planetary imager just dreams about experiencing. Another reason to travel is that current planetary oppositions do not favor Canada, and I'll go into that in just a little bit. But if you can define traveling to a Caribbean vacation and you can do some planetary imaging as well, well, that's just an ingredients to a little slice I have in my opinion, so that is truly something I love to do. And in after a lot of soul searching in terms of what this what we wanted to have in our vacation, plus the meta criteria of really good seeing conditions, we ended up choosing the island of Curacao. Now, if you folks haven't heard of Curacao before, you're you're not alone, because most people do not know how to pronounce the name, let alone know what's where it's located. And so Curacao lies just off the northern coast of the coast of Venezuela as part of the A B C islands of the Netherlands, which is Aruba, Banier and Curacao. From Winnipeg, it takes two flights to get there. We have to fly to either Toronto or Montreal and onward to onward to Curacao. Now, a little more discussion about why planetary oppositions do not favor Canada. And what I did here is I I assembled the planetary oppositions for Mars, Jupiter and Saturn from twenty twenty four, twenty five, five to the year twenty forty. The dates in red are the dates of the wintertime oppositions. And the ones in black, of course, are done during the spring, summer and fall months here. So looking at Mars a little bit. Seventy degrees elevation is what it was in Kingston, so it was really, really well placed this year and it's still this. The downside is your imaging in January, which is never a pleasant month to image in. That certainly isn't in Winnipeg. And the and the degrees here in the blue are the are the is the elevation in Curacao and the difference here in brackets is the is the five degrees between the two. So again, we're looking at really nicely placed a planet for Mars for for this next few oppositions. But in twenty twenty nine, it does drop down a bit to forty six degrees. That's fairly substantial. It's not a wonderful year. And but it is wonderfully placed at seventy six degrees in Curacao, so we're looking at a thirty degree difference in elevation, which is really substantial. The next few oppositions we're looking at in from twenty thirty one to twenty thirty five. Really wonderful temperatures in Canada, but Mars is very low in the sky and making observation quite challenging. And it doesn't increase again into a favorable sky position until twenty two or thirty seven, when again, we're looking at the November and again, we're not not a great time of year to start to really enjoy doing your imaging. And seventy two degrees in twenty forty, but once again, imagine January. It's much the same case in Jupiter. Jupiter, again, really well placed now in our skies, sixty eight degrees at time of opposition, wonderfully placed, but we're doing again, we're in the winter months. And again, it's going to remain about that same sort of elevation, a bit less as it moves from twenty twenty four to twenty twenty eight. And during the winter months, of course, and then when it gets to be warmer outside, we know that it drops down to only thirty eight degrees in elevation from from Kingston area, which is quite low. And it's going to remain low and can keep continue dropping until the starts popping up again in in twenty forty at forty eight degrees in elevation. And what and so basically, that's a twelve year absence of seeing Jupiter in its prime. And that is really quite a long stay. I know that I'm going to go through withdrawal if I don't travel to image Jupiter during that time. Saturn. We're looking at it's it's actually it's poorly placed now, but it does get better. So during from twenty twenty four and then it keeps on increasing in elevation to twenty twenty seven to fifty two degrees. And then in twenty twenty nine, it is sixty one degrees in elevation, which is really well placed. And during the again, our winter months, it keeps on it increases in elevation a little bit, but then it starts dropping from into twenty thirty two down to twenty thirty nine and only pass up pops up again in twenty forty. So it's that's the reasons for doing this kind of travel. And I want to book a like highlight to the year twenty twenty seven for you folks. Because both Mars and Jupiter reach opposition only a few days apart. So if you're looking at, pardon me, I'm kind of a little dry throat here. If you're looking at traveling, twenty twenty seven is a wonderful time to do the to do some traveling, because you'll get both planets really, really play well placed from a southern location. So to sum up that slide, this last slide. Planets will consistently be better placed from a tropical location. And when planets are higher here, the temperatures are colder here. So sorry, folks, don't shoot the messenger. So now going back to Curacao and why we we chose it. Well, it has a lot of things going for it. First of all, it has the right set of geographical and topographical conditions for our frequent excellence seeing conditions. Next, it has a developed infrastructure. For example, water here is safe to drink right out of the tap. And no matter where you go on the island, you're always guaranteed that really, really wonderful drinking water. That's not the case with a lot of a lot of other Caribbean nations. You also get a bonus of being able to drive on the right side of the road. I'm not sure how many folks have had a chance to rent a car and drive in the Caribbean. But my experience is that people drive only one way in the Caribbean. That's fast. Roads are full of twists and turns and there are potholes everywhere. They have some main roads that look more like our back lanes. So driving on the right side of the road is just one less thing to worry about, because who really needs to get into an accident on your vacation, right? Another bonus is that Curacao is south of the hurricane belt. This is only occurs really, this is only important when you travel during the hurricane season, but it's another real bonus for Curacao. Now I had another ace in the hole that solidified my choice with going to Curacao. And that was following the work of Eric Sossenbach, who lives in Curacao. Eric's been a longtime top world class imager for many years now. And and here's an image that he has taken of Jupiter, coincidentally, the same time I was there. And you can see with his C fourteen, he's got tremendous detail in his image. Right from side to side and pole to pole. There's even details within a great red spot, which is a real quite a feat to accomplish. Then there is Eric here on the right image here, and he's got a C fourteen on top of an Optron one twenty mount, and he has the whole thing on Willie bars. With because what all Eric has to do, he just moves his gear from the outside, from the from the inside, rather, rates right outside and sets it up, pins his tripod down, rather, the Willie bars, and then he's rated image in a matter of minutes. And the reason he can do that is because the nighttime temperatures of Curacao only drop one degree from the daytime. So there's no thermally cooling required with his instruments. He there's no cooldown time whatsoever, so he can be able to image within minutes. Like I don't know what's a better feat to 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 say about this, because you can image right away, but you also can imagine shorts and a T shirts and sandals, which in January, that's a really nice treat to have. Want to talk a little bit about wind and topography and how that plays a role here. The image on the left shows the direction of the the easterly trade winds. Virtually all from the east, it very little bit from time to time, but generally they're from the east. And I have a little point here where I show whoops, how did that happen? This is location of our vacation property that we rented. And right here, the wind speed is knocked up says fifty knots, which works out to about twenty seven kilometers an hour, which is quite consistent during night. And the topography here. It's generally much lower topography in the south eastern side of the island and it's higher in the in the in the northwest. So I I wanted to play it safe and get a close sea level as I could. And you can see the elevation here is only about twenty seven meters above sea level. And that made it a really good choice, because the laminar airflow was able just to just come right across from from the from the ocean and fly right over head by over my head without any kind of substantial land masses to interrupt its airflow. So image on the left shows the the site of where our vacation rental is relative to the ocean. It's part of it's actually in a gated community. And that was important to me, because I didn't want to have my gear open to prime eyes. And so it was a security area, which was which was really quite nice. And the image on the right is actually a courtesy of the owner who provided some drone footage of his property. Though this was really handy, because from the from the information I got from him, I was able to determine which areas I wanted to set up my scope well in advance, because I was also able to ask the owner questions like, where are all your power outlets? What voltage were they? Because it doesn't seem like a big deal, a detail to know what your where your power is, but it is. Because all our pounds are working off relentless power, our laptops are everything, right, our our video cameras and the like. So that was really nice to know way ahead of time. And here is the challenge of of that I faced. Everything you see here plus accessories have to fit into just two suitcases, one carry on and one personal bag. So the scope, of course, was was larger and it was going to go on oversized anyway, so that was that was understood way in advance. But the mount was a was an important piece of equipment to sort out. How I ended up going with a Z W M five, because that M M five was able to carry forty four pounds with a counterweight, which is equivalent to one U Q six carrier. And that was and to have that in such a compact size that actually considered to be a personal carry on item, not not just a something in your carry on suitcase, but a personal item bag was is really, really nice. And further into what I have here, you see there's a I'm not sure if you folks can see my cursor when I'm doing this here or not, but there's the pure extension here on top of the tripod. The peer extension was really, really important. I'm sorry. Yeah, the peer extension was really, really important, because if you notice the the polar axis and how close it is to the actual tripod. Because Curacao Polaris is only oh. So Curacao is only twelve degrees, pardon me, Polaris only twelve degrees in elevation, so it's really dropped the counterweight dangerously close to the tripod. Still, the peer extension was absolutely mandatory, so yeah, that kind of way would would definitely hit the tripod legs when the mount was moving around. So I really do credit the the harmonic mounts with really enabling this trip to happen. Another detail is about the tripod. I ended up choosing the Avalon T one ten tripod, because it was the only tripod that I could find that had the weight carrying capacity and the rigidity and still be able to fit into a standard twenty eight inch suitcase. Because that I looked high and low and did a lot of research, research on it. That was the only tripod I could found that that could work, you know, within a travel, a standard standard suitcase. OK. The choice next came to which scope I was going to take with me. I had two scopes that I considered to be suitable for for this for traveling. One was a C eleven, the other one was C nine and a quarter. The the case here, you see in the left hand image, the smaller one, that was the one that was going to fit with a C nine and a quarter. And that's a nutcase made in Canada here, Quebec specifically. And the C eleven was going to fit a larger Pelican case. What an important thing to mention is that with the the weight of the fully loaded nine a quarter in in the in that in that case came in at fifty five pounds. But the C eleven in the Pelican case came in exactly seventy pounds. The maximum weight of your luggage before it's before it's considered to be cargo with within airlines is seventy pounds. And I was just riding it too close for comfort. And considering this is our first trip, making some doing something like this, I decided to play it safe and choose the C nine and a quarter. And you see it fully loaded here right now with with all the accessories in it. And yes, these are tense tent stakes in the case here. And the reason why I I packed those, because I I was going to play around with choosing two different locations to set up a scope. And I thought, well, if I can just, you know, mark the location, that would save me a little bit of effort when it came to polar alignment. And so here's the final equipment, then selection that made the cut. And so the C nine and a quarter and the checked luggage and then the tripod, of course, the peer extension. I had to take one ten pound counterweight, two guide scopes, zero power finder, motorized focus, your spirit cables and power source. A two hundred twenty volt power inverter. I didn't end up needing it, but I bought it along just in case. A wind tarp and tie down straps, which I'm going to talk about the importance of those in a bit. And then in the carry on luggage, we have the AM five mount with the ASI era, because I needed to do the ASI era along, because I needed to, I wouldn't wasn't sure if it's going to be able to see Polaris because it's so low in the sky. And I want to be able to do a plate self polar alignment. And then I had the a couple of color and three Monaco and video cameras, filters and a filter reel, bite pieces, barlow and diagonal. Laptop, computer and accessories, and of course, a fairly large portable hard disk drive, because you can sure fill up a hard drive fast when you're taking doing planetary videos. So here's my setup on the first night and remember I mentioned about the importance of wind tarps. When I set up on the first night, I had just a C in the image on the left, I just had one tarp brought with me and I thought that was going to be enough. Because I thought it was going to be well sheltered and you can see there the water is the pardon me, the ocean is just just beyond here. But what I found out really quickly is that even though it was blocked from the wind here, wind was coming through this opening here, hitting the backside of the rental property and then coming around and buffering me from from the the other way around. And as a result, my scope was like bouncing around as a tuning fork, despite how rigid they had the system really was. So the first night, it was it was really did nothing panned out as far as the image imaging results. But that was solved fairly quickly with a trip to a local hardware store. And you can see I have another tarp set up here and that made all the difference in the world and it it's it's allowed the imaging to happen successfully after that. So here's the final setup on the first night of successful imaging. And you can see from the image on the left where the scope position is. I was imaging Jupiter time. It's it was virtually at Zenith and you just cannot have a better place to plan it than at Zenith to image a planet. And I wanted to sort of convey the quality of the scene there and I took up, I just held my cell phone up to the to the to the live capture that was happening with Saturn. And I would rate this scene was in the nine out of ten range was really, really quite nice. And I'll just have you give you an idea. You can see that the image was not going in and out of focus. It was fairly good. It was really holding itself well. Casino division was well resolved when I was in this image as well, so I was really quite pleased as with with the scene for that first successful line of imaging. So let's just take a look at the results here. Oops. This was the result of Jupiter on the first night of imaging. For those that are used to, well, I'll go into this graph a little bit later, but the detail on Jupiter was solid from from side to side, top to bottom as well. And I had to remind myself, I was just using C nine and a quarter for this. This was not it's not considered to be a large scope from a planetary imaging perspective. You know, wasn't a C fourteen or a sixteen scope. This was really just a nine and a quarter. And there's a lot of detail throughout here and including this really, really lovely festoon that is near the central region of the planet. This was Europa and it's shadow was an absolute defined bullet hole on the planet. All in all, the amount of detail was happening here turned out to be really, it really really thrilled me to know and have this is my first result. For those of you who are into planetary imaging will recognize this quality graph. And it's generated by Auto Stacker when it goes through and sorting out the different frames. But a little bit of orientation here, this is the fifty percent quality line, this horizontal line here. And this is the divisions of of the video captures here is twenty five, fifty and seventy five percent. So back back home. When for for me to see a quality graph like this was unheard of, like I've only see it usually usually cuts off around this twenty five percent mark of maybe at the fifty, but it never goes as far. So I was able to use virtually the entire length of of a video to do my final stacking. Like I said, that just does not happen from back in Winnipeg.
Mike, just a heads up that we're not seeing your mouse moving around when you're pointing.
Oh, OK.
Yeah, just bear that in mind next time.
Thank you. I'm going to see if I can make that happen a little bit better for you. Yeah, I think I'm not sure if I can actually do this from this part of the presentation. I was hoping I'd be able to choose. Yeah, I was hoping I'd be able to choose something that would work better. Yeah, I'm sorry, folks. OK. OK, so move on to the oh, this is the next image that happened. It just it was just actually happened just about twenty thirty minutes after the first one was taken and now Iowa came into view. And you can see it and it just is the moon that's that's higher in elevation. There's even some little detail on aisle in terms of some shadows on the on the moon. That's really not something I was able to accomplish back home with a scope with a size metaphor. I couldn't do it a C eleven with a C eleven. So to have this accomplished with a relatively small aperture, just was testament of how good the scene really was. This is likely the the best image I took of Jupiter during this day, because I would rate the scene conditions as being quite excellent this this evening, that evening. Like there's there's just a wealth of detail seen throughout the entire part of Jupiter here, including that lovely festoon that just arcs right through the central region of the planet in the equatorial zone. And because of that, I really had to believe that the the scope was operating at maximum optical resolving power. And that was quite a quite a thrill, because I've never experienced that before. You know, you're always limited by the atmosphere, but in but in in Curacao, the scene was so good that particular night. in Curacao, the scene was so good that particular night that it was working at its absolute, absolute maximum resolving power, a a total thrill to be able to see that firsthand. A few days later, the Great Red Spot came into view. And um, just a lot of detail again for this image. Uh, the, all the eddies that that tend to follow the uh, the Great Red Spot uh in the southern equatorial belt there here. And um, yeah, just little ovals that that are popping out in the um, in this, in the southern parts and again, they appear again in the northern parts, uh, polar regions as well. Really, again, a lovely treat to see. Now, this image here was probably the best one I took when the Great Red Spot was in view. Because you can actually see details within the Great Red Spot as well. I'm not sure if you folks can see that with your screen fairly well. But the details are are again, you see some little marks and and uh, within it. That again, is something I haven't been able to experience from doing this back in Winnipeg and so this was another treat. And later on, um, Io came into view and you see it right beside the Great Red Red Spot there. Seeing there since weren't quite as good as the previous evening for the, when the Great Red Spot was in transit, but nonetheless, it was so not a bad view. I wanted to show you folks some examples of um, the typical filters that uh planetary images use for a primature collaboration work. Um, we usually go with infrared and then the methane band and then the luminous, the standard luminous image. Of all three of the images that are uh, uh, filters that are used, the most important one from a planetary science perspective is the methane band image. Because you get to build a real three dimensional picture of the planet that way. That the the, the filter used is absorbs the um, methane and you can see the methane rich areas as as the dark areas. And uh consequently, they're actually clouds that are deeper down in the surface of uh, on the cloud surface of Jupiter. Whereas the image, the parts that are white are at a high elevation and the um on the, on the, in the cloud surface. And so that way, again, you can build a three dimensional picture of your mind about it. And to make this a little bit more clear, it clearly illustrated. What I've done is I put across some lines to help you uh divide uh just to see the planetary detail better and within the different images itself. There is a, it's it's too bad that I can't be successful in using my pointer here. But for example, um, if you look at the methane band image and you see the Great Red Spot, really obvious, if you go straight up um, and near the top, you will see another little white oval that's quite prominent. But if you try to find that white oval in either luminous image or the gray or the uh IR wavelength, you're really hard pressed to see it. And that's really the benefit of being able to image in methane band because it really makes things that are would be invisible, visible. The other thing to draw your attention to is that um in the upper part, you know, there's, there is a horizontal band like a, like a tempered band um above the um, above the equatorial zone. And but you'll notice in the luminous image and in the IR, it is completely invisible. But it is, it it shows up in stark relief in the methane band image. And it just goes to show how important that particular uh wavelength is. So I would certainly encourage any planetary images or images that are that are attending this to give serious consideration to using a methane band image um, for uh, for your, for doing Jupiter in the future. It really makes a difference for the science community. I was also able to image Uranus, which I've never been able to do before. Um. I, and when you can, when I overexpose a little bit, you can also resolve a lot of the moons around Uranus. Now Uranus's features of the world, you really can't resolve much detail at all and regardless of the kind of scopes you and amateur can have back in on the surface here. So the most you can expect would be to see the the polar cap. And that's what you see now is a larger white circle that's facing us because it's oriented uh facing the earth now. And um but that's really the extent of what you can, you can image it as well as, you know, some of the moons as well. But it was something that was not being never able to do before uh back in Winnipeg, so this opened up an opportunity to do to do so. Uh, here's an image of Venus in UV light. Of all the I've tried really hard back to Winnipeg to do this. Because uh, those of us with with some knowledge of filters will know that um, infrared filters are much more forgiving with in terms of atmospheric um, conditions and and scene conditions. Whereas filters on the blue side of the spectrum are much more critical of um scene conditions. So when you're imaging in UV light, that's that's further in the in the spectrum from the blue. So you really need to have very good scene conditions in order to resolve any kind of detail in the upper cloud surface of Venus. So this image here, where was it, where represented a personal best for me to be able to image um, this with a smish cast grain. Uh, it it was really quite nice to be able to to capture that kind of level of detail in the cloud surface. And can't forget about Saturn. Um, Saturn was is was lower in the sky because it reached opposition prior to to the months I was there, but still was high enough in elevation to get a really decent result. Now, these, these were done in really quite very good seeing conditions and there's a lot of detail within the rings that you can see as well as the uh, as well as the band definitions on the planet itself. This was probably the best Saturn image I took during the my time here in Curacao. And also in Wiltau, not sure if this is easy built to see because my screen is really quite small here, but there was, I was able to capture a um um uh, the fetus which was in transit and along with its shadow following it like that this was a rate of, you can't, so sorry about here, I'm usually always using my cursing and I keep getting stumbled with that, but um um, yeah, so that just was in transit more or less around the central median and the lower part below the rings on the planet. And its shadow was um, more towards the the right hand side, not hugely visible, but it was again, was a treat to be able to actually capture that. The two other moons in the picture are Rhea and Dion. So here's some lessons I learned from from this experience in Curacao is that don't sell a smaller scope short. Not everybody is able to bring a large scope in their travels for whatever reason, but you'll be amazed at what a smaller aperture can do with really good scene conditions. Now, you may recall the image that I showed uh with Aristotle and Bach standing in this uh, in that same um slide. Well, here is, here's that image he took, uh, which is a C fourteen. And just a, which was taken just a few minutes. Um, I think about twelve minutes. Uh, after I took this image here with a C nine a quarter on that same night. Sure, the image on the C fourteen is show is much more resolving with resolution of fine detail, which only to be expected. Because it's it's just a lot of optics. But if you compare uh, features you see in one image in a C fourteen, you will see it again in the C nine a quarter. So despite the the substantial difference in aperture, a smaller size scope can still really impress you uh when you're in a location with with wonderful seeing conditions. So why travel to plant for country imaging? Well, I thought this is probably the best image comparison I can show you. Um, the image on the left was uh, the best image I took with a C nine a quarter from back in Winnipeg. And I was really thrilled with that image. I thought I was really pleased at the time. But when you compare it to the best image taken in Curacao, there's really no comparison. It's like you've taken a veil off of the one on the left side to get the final result on the right. It's just it was just such a big dramatic difference and it's it's the reason why, folks, I'm back here again this year. So some final thoughts, like after a dedicated, like I've been doing this for about eight years now, really serious and um I was really not entirely pleased with the results during that time. I know I should get some good results from time to time, but there really weren't acceptable results. And when I was imaging in Winnipeg and I thought, wow, I was having really good seeing conditions, they must be eight of a ten. Then I was gonna, then I would compare the view, like the results from other managers across the world, saying they also had some of their same conditions. The two managers were not even close to being the, being the same playing field. Mine were so much worse. So I had to think, what was I doing wrong? Was there something in my imaging train I wasn't getting right? Was there something in my uh, in my, in my workflow that was not under, not not getting right? And so I had to go to a location with known excellent scene conditions so that um, the scene conditions were where it was a level playing field, basically. So once I was in a location with known excellent scenes conditions, I was able to compare my work against other majors across the world, uh, including Eric who's imaging at the same time, also under excellent scene condition. So what is able to determine from that time is that we're doing a side by side, side by side comparison with other majors confirming the results that sure enough, if you do a lot of the basic things right, um, you'll get good results of where you are, especially if you're in a location with good seeing. You will see that your validation with your, with your techniques. And that validation was absolutely priceless to me and it was worth worthwhile the trip. And folks, I thank you for your time and um, I can do my best to uh answer any questions that you may have now. And I'm gonna stop sharing here and
Thanks so much, Mike.
Oh, thank you, folks. I appreciate, appreciate your time.
Our absolutely unbelievable results, really amazing. Um, I'm gonna take uh, all the questions that uh, that we can. I I I saw Roger had one in the chat. Roger, would you like to uh, ask it directly?
Oh, I have so many questions, but but the first one was the the CH four filtered images. Um, so, so I mean, I like to dabble a little in planetary photography myself, so the the image that I have behind me, for instance, is is my favorite one of Jupiter. But it was done from Eastern Ontario, so I'm gobsmacked by by the sort of images that that you were showing. Um. Basically, how much longer um are the exposures for for CH four?
Oh, you, you know, there, I I, you know, you can only take them so long because we have that, you know, the issue of the planet rotating so fast.
Right.
So there really weren't any different length of exposure time. But what I, what I did have to do is I had to push the gain to be able to get some decent results because CH four filter is a very opaque filter and so you you need to have some exposure time, or pardon me, you need to have some extra gain applied to the image. It's not so much a factor when you have like a larger scope because you'll have more light naturally. But the smaller scope, in my case, a C nine a quarter, I needed to really push the gain to make that happen.
Okay, I mean, if this time I'd like to ask you a couple more questions.
Go ahead, Roger. Just continue your last one is is, and let me know.
Um, uh, okay, so so fair enough. Um, so what sort of, um, so you you mentioned Astro Stackered. Um, do you use also use uh, uh, Wind Jupos to try and get rid of the the rotational effects or not?
Hundred percent. Wind Jupus is a critical part of my ambient when my processing works though. So what I, what I do is I I, everything's done with fire capture. That's my go to program for capturing the images. And then Auto Stackered, which is four now, I think. And then um, then I use Registax for the wavelength processing. And then on to Wind Jupos for the de-rotation and then final tweaking in Photoshop. That's my general workflow with the with the software.
Yeah, fair. Um, which camera is your camera choice of the moment then?
Oh, hmm, okay. You know, my choice are black and white right now. I like the 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 four sixty two MM. But uh, there's a lot of good cameras out there. There really are. And my go to camera for color now, a single shot color would be the five eighty five MC. It has a really good deep well and so it's a, it's got good performance characteristics.
Right, and and so very high frame rate. So so is it better to have a higher frame rate or is it better to have lower gain?
Uh, I, I missed that part, sorry.
So 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 you you're trying to get as much light as you can to make sure that you you're you're sat there just barely, almost overexposed, right, to get a proper exposure.
Right.
You can adjust the the frame rate or the exposure and the gain and try and find the sweet spot in there. Uh, do you find it's better to have to have a noisier image, but a shorter frame, but a shorter exposure time? Or is it better to have a smoother image, um, but 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 a longer exposure?
Well, that's, that's the benefit of Wind Jupos is that the more you capture and the more you de-rotate, the your signal noise ratio increases dramatically, right? And uh, so you can really, you can eliminate a lot of the noise from doing a lot of, lot of frame stacked like in Wind Jupos.
Okay, so so one other question and then and then I'll sit down. I, as I said, thank you very much for this. One of the things that 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 I have, I have heard, um, I I read a report of some of the um, great visual observers um, of the um, of the of the eighteen hundreds. Um, but people like like Melish, right, and 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 Pickering and on those guys who at times had seen craters on Mars. And um, and and would almost in hushed tones talk to them about each other because that was almost forbidden. And and now one of the times that they really liked to observe was was around a time called quadrature. When the, when the planet is at its highest just before dawn, because most places that you are, that's when the seeing conditions are the best. So they gave up um, um, to 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 photograph, or sorry, to to look at the image when it was at its biggest. Um, instead tried to look at it when it was at its um, highest possible, um, best possible seeing. Uh, have you used anything at all like that or or you've just said, I'm I'm going down south and that's all there is to it?
Well, you know, actually going down south did uh turn some ideas I had upside down. Because what's the standard thing? We, when we see a star twinkler, we think, uh, the thing's gonna be bad. And and that happened on the, one of the nights I I looked outside and I thought, oh. I was looking at stars around forty five, fifty degrees up. I thought, they're twinkling. I'm I'm done. This, this, I'm S O L this night, right? But Jupiter was at eighty five degrees. So I, well, hey, I made this trip, I must also try Jupiter. So I went up there and Jupiter was a rock. And such a different difference like that, it it's, I think it all really comes down to that stable laminar flow.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, it's really hard. Just when you think you've got it all worked out and like, like capturing planets during that uh, that magic time between uh, you know, just at, you know, at dusk and dawn, when you have that thermal equilibrium happening and between the ground, the heat currents coming up and so forth. And that's, that's a valid point, but um I, like I said, uh, I have to rethink a few things since I've been here.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I thoroughly enjoyed that.
You're very welcome, Roger.
Yeah, just to remind people, I don't know if I made it clear, uh, you are in Curacao at the moment as you, as you present to us, right?
Yes, yes, I am, I am. Um, um, and I'm grateful right now to be in an air conditioned bedroom. Because I think the temperature is, oh, I think they're probably about twenty nine degrees right now at night. Uh, which is, it it it's just, it's it's shocking from a, from a fellow from Winnipeg that's experienced a sixty degree temperature difference. Yes, it's something else.
Sounds like hell.
You'll have to join me one day, folks. Come on.
Oh, for sure. Um, are there any other questions out there that, uh, if anybody wants to? Uh, is that, uh, I see a hand waving iPad four.
Well, that's me. I just wanted to know what the experience is shipping your equipment down to Curacao. If you took a C fourteen or whatever down there, it how uh, how much did they charge you and uh, what you brought on the airlines, I would assume?
Yeah, because uh, I really didn't want to get into shipping terms for the cargo perspective because I I looked into it and uh, I went through pre-later and UPS and DHL and just, just to ship something that was like the C eleven, which is made it seventy seventy pounds, would cost about a thousand bucks each way. And I thought that was ludicrous and it'd be, and not, but if you can get something that still cannot consider it to be cargo and under seventy pounds, it just costs you a hundred bucks, you know, one way. Uh, so I just had a hard time justifying bringing a larger scope and have it cost more than my airfare to fly myself down. Yeah, I think it was like fifteen hundred bucks for me to fly return and let alone spending two thousand bucks on the telescope there and back. But if anybody has a deal or an idea of what a a good career that can actually do this economically, I'm all ears.
So you just checked it with your baggage?
Yeah, I I checked it with the baggage. Yes. And I bet your next question be, did you collect a lot of attention when you were sending, transporting something that size? And you're right, there was.
Okay.
Yeah, and and everybody was curious as to what was in that thing. You know, going through oversized conveyors and everything would say, let's put in this thing anyway, you know, tell me a bit about it. And then once I explained it, they said, oh, that's fine. Okay, no problem.
I was in Curacao.
Pardon me?
I was customs in Curacao.
Oh, again, uh, they just uh, wanted to know what was, what was in the, in the case. They didn't make me open it or anything. Oh, again, uh, they just uh, wanted to know what was, what was in the, in the case. They didn't make me open it or anything.
No.
So, yeah, it, it was a little more casual. Yeah, they, they, they appreciate tourists here.
Um, I have a question. Um, when you started talking, you said you wanted somewhere where it was like high above the ground. But also like you want to be close to an ocean where it's like eastern. Uh, so would anything along like the eastern seaboard work? Um, in terms of like, um, like say Port of Alarta or something like that, in terms of like, it's, it's, it's on the coast. But it's like right on the, the, the shoreline. So it's getting that easterly Pacific breeze.
Yes, I agree, but certainly would help. Uh, one thing, one site that I found was really quite invaluable is windy.com. Because you can see the wind, wind levels and you can, you adjust between. Ground level and, you know, five thousand meters and you keep on going up to the, to the jet stream areas. And you can really get an idea of where the wind flows are gonna be. But um, I actually had a, an email conversation with Damian Peach about that because I said, you know, Damian. You know, coming up on my retirement years, you know, if, if I get blessed with a windfall of cash, where am I, where should I really go? And he said, well, um, don't go to, I mean, there's some beautiful images like from Christopher Go in the Philippines, he said, but there's a lot of, a lot of overcast skies there, so don't go there. So, and so, and same thing with Central America, good, good potential, but you got a lot of overcast skies. So his preference again was always going to the Caribbean islands. His preference was Barbados.
Alright.
So the closer you are to water though, the better you are. But I would, I really look at uh, windy.com. I think that'd be, when you study the wind, uh, how it flows uh, across the oceans, it would uh, I think that would be a good way of, of confirming that for yourself.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Graham. Uh, any other questions? Okay, well, again, thanks so much, Mike. That was a, a great uh, experience to see your results and uh. Uh, like it's totally worth it, totally worth it. Like if you're into it as much as we are. There's, it's a no-brainer. There's, there's no doubt about it. It's, it's gotta be done at least once if, if. Like, for example, in the, in the planetary community, I think uh, one trip to Curacao is. Gotta be on your schedule. And based on what you've shown us, right? Coming up in a couple of years is a good time.
Yeah, start planning it now, folks. I'll meet you, I'll meet you here.
Okay, so uh, at this point, we're gonna just take a quick five-minute break. And at the top of the hour, we'll come back and Rick will start us off with what's up in the sky. And then we'll have uh, Graham Hay will give us a, a demo on Seastar. So, back in five. Uh, 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 item on the agenda is Rick with what's up in the sky. Uh, it's all yours, Rick.
Alright.
Oh, do I need to make you?
Uh, well. I'm just waiting for Zoom to come up and.
Oh, you should be good.
There we go, I'm good. Alright, everybody see that?
Yes.
So, first meeting of the year. Um, the background image this month is NGC thirteen thirty-three. Uh, quite a complicated emission and reflection and dark nebula. Lots of, lots of cool stuff in there. Uh, local events on uh, Friday afternoon, Mark Chen at Queens is gonna be talking about. Liquid scintillators for detecting um, neutrinos. And Saturday evening, there's gonna be the Queen's Open House, Queen's Observatory Open House. With this, I don't know, it was like fourteen, I think, um, PhD student. Beginner's guide to radio telescopes. Another kind of telescope you don't have to look through. BAA events, uh, Friday, the Radio Astronomy Group is having their regular Zoom. Uh, developing, deploying an instrument for measuring ionization in the atmosphere. And then on the eighteenth of January, they're having their regular meeting, which they are. Planning to screen live on YouTube. So we can watch that. A V S O webinars uh, on Saturday, they're talking about All Stars. So that's a review of uh, the volunteers with the organization, what they do. And stuff, so you can uh, get some ideas of how you might wanna participate or at least understand a little more of. What the organization is, what they do and stuff. Well, we're past uh, the um, solstice, so the night times are getting shorter. Uh, sunset has already gotten eighteen minutes later. And we're just, uh, just about five, five days, I think, past the, the day of latest. Uh, sunrise, so it's only changed by about a minute. Up in the sky, uh, tomorrow evening, uh, the moon is gonna transit through M forty-five. This is a great opportunity. Uh, to watch uh, occultations of bright stars. So even uh, I think a fairly smallish telescope, uh, you should be able to get some nice views of uh, some of the bright. We had, we had, uh, being occulted by the moon. On the tenth, uh, Venus will be at its greatest elongation east. In the south-southwest sky after sunset. I'm amazed every evening when I go out. And I see just how far around towards the south Venus is right now. It's uh, quite amazing. On the twelfth of January, Mars will be at its closest approach to Earth. Uh, just a little over ninety-six gigameters. Uh, the thirteenth full moon. And uh, later that day, uh, the moon will occult Mars. Uh, disappearances sometime about nine twenty in the evening and reappearance about an hour and. Uh, ten minutes later. Um, so this is just like four hours after full moon. So you're not gonna have the benefit of a dark limb. Watch this on, but uh, with a good telescope and some magnification, uh, should be a worthwhile thing to look. On the fifteenth in the evening, Mars is at opposition. Magnitude minus one point three seven and its maximum diameter fourteen point six arc seconds. And on the eighteenth, uh, Saturn has been moving down uh. Into the evening twilight and uh, Venus uh. Has been coming up higher. And so on the eighteenth of January, the two will pass each other. And uh, just, there'll be just two degrees uh, below the two of them. Uh, Saturn is two hundred times fainter than Venus. So it'll be an interesting contrast. Uh, twenty-first is last quarter moon. Uh, twenty-second of January, if you have any interest in imaging uh, space probes. The Gaia spacecraft has completed its mission and starting on the twenty-second, they're going to do some research. Into um, management of spacecraft and stuff. And, and one of the things they want to do is see what the brightness of the spacecraft is as they reorient its solar panels. And so unexpectedly, they were expecting to be able to image the thing with uh, two to three meter telescopes. All the time to uh, help pin down its position. Uh, and they were expecting it to be eighteenth or nineteenth magnitude and it ended up being twenty-first. So they're interested in figuring out what the heck went wrong. But uh, sort of the last week of January, it should be up as bright as fifteenth magnitude. So uh, anybody interested in imaging that uh, can give it a try. They do have a website that uh, that gives accurate positions uh, for imaging. Uh, new moon on the twenty-ninth. On the thirty-first of January, uh, the crescent moon is uh, just below Saturn, three point four degrees. And then Venus is about ten degrees above those two. And on the following evening, uh, the moon is up beside Venus with uh, Saturn down below them. Very fortunate. Uh, February right now is looking like a really boring month. First quarter moon on the fifth, full moon on the twelfth. Those are the only two things I've come up with so far that are happening.
Pitchers and catchers on the twentieth.
Who's that, what?
Pitchers and catchers on the twentieth.
Yeah, okay. Right. Uh, T Corbor uh, is getting way up in the sky at uh, the beginning of nautical twilight. It's uh, already fifty-six degrees high and it's still faint as of five o'clock this morning. The major planets, as I mentioned, Venus and Saturn are quite close. Uh, by the end of the month and uh, both of them are going to be moving uh, further down uh, into the sun. Neptune's uh, just, I can't remember, ten degrees or something uh, east. Of Saturn, so it sets quite early in mid-evening. Uh, Uranus, uh, quite a big jump away to it. Transits in mid-evening and sets before mid-morning twilight. So that's uh, it's in an ideal position to try uh. Seeing it and it's at mag five point seven, so uh, you can even see if you can see it naked eye. Uh, Jupiter coming up to, or just past opposition rather, uh, is up all night. Um, Mars uh, also up pretty much all night, transits about midnight. And Mercury is uh, plunging back down towards the sun. And uh, at mag minus zero point seven, it's in really bright twilight when it rises. So probably won't be visible. Uh, small bodies on the first of February, twenty-eight Bologna is uh, at opposition. That's one I've never heard of before. And on the twelfth, uh, Amphitrite is at opposition. And in the asteroid occultations, here's a really good one. Um, the asteroid El Leoncito. At uh, just over sixteenth magnitude is gonna occult a, an eight point eight magnitude star. So six point one magnitude drop for up to three and a half seconds and the path crosses uh. Almost everybody, I think uh, this is one of the few that uh, Roger doesn't get to see. And the other one is the asteroid, the Nork. Everybody recognizes Nork. As the Naval Coordinance Research Computer. Uh, one of the high-end computers that was installed for the Navy, US Navy. In nineteen fifty-four, full of thousands of vacuum tubes. Uh, it's occulting an eleven point six magnitude star for up to three point one seconds. And this one uh, is a good one for Roger and uh, I think Mike. Ames might be able to pick it up. He's just on the uh, the edge. And I don't think any of the rest is, I think even that, yeah, Battersea's too far south. I'm just. Just below the limit, so.
January twenty-seventh.
Yeah.
Uh, Mike, I think will be, Mike will be in um, Arizona.
Ah, well, he'll definitely miss it.
Yeah, we leave tomorrow morning.
Oh, lucky you. Alright, that's all I got, all I got. Any questions?
Thanks, Rick.
Alright.
Graham, would you like to tell us about the Seestar? You're on mute.
Now I'm off mute. So hopefully you guys can hear me. Hey, everyone. Um, is it possible I can do the share screen thing?
I hope so. Give it a try.
Okay. Here, those over here. And we're going to close that and we're gonna hit. Share screen and I'm gonna pick screen one. And through the miracle of does this actually, is it showing it?
I see your iPhone, right, or AI phone.
Yeah, okay, good.
Tablet.
Yeah, okay, so um. Uh, I've been trying out the Seestar S fifty um, for the better part of a year now, for almost a year. Um, and I've been trying out a couple of those smart telescopes and stuff, but I recently got the S thirty as well, which I have out here. This is um, currently live, um, outside. Um, they're both imaging right now or they're, they're looking at the moon. Um, the sky is kind of poor, so I was kind of hoping for something a little bit better. Um, but um, yeah, it's basically just running right off of my um, iPhone on the one. And I have this little like iPad mini that's running the other one. Um. So what I can do is the one with uh, that says, oh, where are we here? So the one on the right is the S thirty and the one on the left is the S fifty. Um, and you can kind of see how they're controlled here. Um, you can press like a button and it'll enable correction and, and point. I didn't do all the calibration stuff yet because I got the S thirty recently. Uh, then it's been cloudy. Um, but you can have it here, you can do autofocus, uh, there's. Uh, where it'll focus automatically. Usually the image is better, but it, like, it's so, um.
Yeah, it's too cloudy.
It, 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 it's like I can see it outside, so I was surprised I actually got it. Uh, earlier, earlier this evening was a little bit better. Um, and you can do stuff like uh, two times zoom if we wanna get in here. Uh, the main reason I wanted to show you this, guys, was because um, just to give you an idea that uh, there are, they are different uh, fields of view. The S thirty is a little bit wider field of view than the S fifty. Um, and if I do it like this. That gives you a pretty good comparison, like this is now with the two X. Um, and in a good day, you could go like four X and you could see some more detail. Um, you could take a photo, um, using photos. Um, it does video and it also does time lapse. Now, if we go to time lapse, uh, you can see there's different time lapse rates. Um, so there's like. So if you're doing like, say, um, solar um, or lunar, uh, you could have it where, I see if I can hold it up here.
Graham, if you're, if, if, if you're doing this on the Mars occultation night, you could do a, a four-hour time lapse.
Yeah, as long as you, as long as it has battery power, it'll just keep going. Sorry, what?
It would be kind of boring because you'd just see it blink out and then blink back in again like ten seconds later in your timelines.
Yeah, so you could do a time lapse of it moving there. I would recommend that instead of doing a time lapse, you do a video. If you want, like, if it's gonna blink out and come back because then you have the, the video is a little bit more detailed. Um, same thing, you could do this with like the, uh, uh, the occult, I'm gonna pronounce it wrong. Occultations of like the little tiny asteroids and stuff like that of the stars. If you have it pointed at the star, you can kind of go and do that. Um, if we're, I'm, right now I'm in solar mode, so it's twine there. But if we go here, and I'm just going to close this. Um, you can go to stargazing mode and it'll show you like what's the best for the night. Obviously, I can't see anything because the sky is kind of. But what you can do is you can go to the Sky Atlas, which is down here. And uh, you can zoom out, you can move it and you sort, you know, if you wanna point at the plate, you can go like this, you hit go to. It's probably gonna get a little upset at me, but let's see if it'll do it. Um.
And you're just swiping on the tablet or on the phone?
I'm just doing this as I'm doing, yeah, just swipe click, you know, very easy to use. This is great for beginners because. Um, as long as you have an idea that the sky is above you and it's a giant circle, um, you know, as a sort of a sphere around the planet. Um, this works pretty well and um, it's very easy to use, like insanely easy to use. Um, there's also like, there's a, it came with like a manual, um, and you can check stuff online too on how to do certain things. Um, and there's a whole bunch of like, uh, I don't know if it'll do it because uh, it's cloudy outside, but we could try that out. And I'll switch to the uh, the S fifty on the other one here. Um, so the S fifty, the controls are all the same. The only thing the S fifty doesn't have is it doesn't have that second camera, so you don't have that little wide-field camera. Uh, to sort of look and point and stuff. So like, if you wanna find the moon or sun or something, you can double-click on it. It's very useful for when you're doing like scenery, like birds and stuff. Because you can literally just click on the wide-field one for planetary or astro, you tend to use this uh, Sky Atlas. So while I was trying to find that, um, I think I have a bunch of pictures still on here. Um. Kind of go through, yeah, there's, I have a bunch of stuff, so I'll see. So, uh, I don't have all the stuff I did here. But like, you can see, um, with the S fifty, um, this is, yeah, back in um, September. So I don't have all the stuff in here, but.
Does that tell you how many frames or how long it exposed it for or?
Um. That, if it, if I export it, I think it kicks out data on it. Um, let's see here. If I click export, it's gonna say, save as an image. Let's see here. Where are my images? Yeah, okay, that's great, but where is the? So it says moon, yeah, so it'll, it'll tell you like where you did it, the date and the time. I'm not sure if it will kick out, um. Yeah, there you go, so it'll take out like seven minutes, um and it won't tell, the only thing it won't tell you is. Um, is that seven minutes at ten seconds or twenty seconds or thirty second exposures? Uh, but it will tell you uh how, how much it took for this, so this is like seven minutes um on the Orion Nebula. Go back here. Um. See what else I got here. This was one image, um and again, you can sort of edit stuff. Um, there's a lot you can actually do in the app, and the nice thing is that they keep updating the stuff. So that you can start doing like a lot of things, so if you want to, you could sort of, well, maybe not do that. See if I can do it there, okay, and then eh. So like for somebody using this, obviously you can download all this stuff onto your computer and do all the, you know, um.
How do you do, have you downloaded?
I, I've downloaded a bunch of stuff, I haven't done a lot of processing yet uh with the images.
Oh, how, how do you download it?
Oh, how, um you just plug it into your computer using the USB C and it'll turn on as a hard drive.
Do you have to be a Mac user to do that?
No, no, I, I uh, I'm, I'm just using an iOS, cause I have iOS here.
So you plug your tablet to your computer?
No, no, not the tablet, the, the C star. Plug the C star in with the USB C that comes with it right to the back of your computer or your USB port, and it opens up just like a portable hard drive. It's like, this portable hard drive I'm holding here.
All the images are on the C star, not on the tablet.
Not on the tablet, you can download them from the C star to the tablet, like if I uh.
That's a fundamental piece I didn't understand before.
So, sorry, so um, yeah, so they're saved, which is saved onto the tablet, and there's C star, which is on the C star itself. So you can save an image from the C star onto your tablet, you can save it into your um. Photo page or photo app or whatever you want as well, um. And you can have this where if you plug it into the computer. Um, it'll show up like a external hard drive on the, like if you plug the C star into it. And you just copy the files over onto your other hard drive and away you go.
Got it.
So it's, 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 it's very easy, um and. Like again, there's, I'm just, this one was a bit longer, cause you can see the field rotation. Um, so the longer you go, um the more data you get, but the more field rotation you have. And uh when you got a lot of field rotation, you'll end up losing basically the corners. Um, so consider that while this is like in a, oh, did I, sorry, did I put that the wrong way?
Could you mitigate the field rotation by using a wedge?
So, um, they are working, so the answer to that is ye- the, the, the short answer is yes, the long answer is no. Yet, so the C star isn't actually designed to be used in equatorial mode. But you could put it on a wedge and. The calibration will kick and scream, but you could make it work and then it'll say, okay, I'm now, you know. Wherever it is on the planet and I'm pointing at this thing and it will track things and it'll do a lot better. Than if you have it in alt as mode. But they are actually working on an update to actually added, like actually supported equatorial mode. So you can go like, if the C star's over like this and you tilt it, you know, where I am forty five degrees pointing north. It'll still work and it'll do what it's supposed to do and it'll give you a lot less field rotation, but it's not actually in equatorial mode. Versus they're gonna design it so that you can do that and then it realizes it's in equatorial mode.
Cool.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, um, so that's not quite yet here, but I expect that sometime later this year, probably, you know, I'd say probably. March, April, May, somewhere around there, um I don't think, I, I haven't seen it in the beta testing yet, so. Um, therefore, it's at least a month away or two, um. And uh, yeah, it's too, too cloudy for the other one to find, okay. Um, so you could do a lot of images, um. And see what else. Again, I'm just trying to show you what, what, if somebody was to like pick this up today and image it and not go through the whole, let's do the astro processing stuff. This is kind of what you get. Um, I think I have one image, I went and I had it up here on my.
Kevin, can you make your uh image screen larger for us?
The image, yeah, okay, one second, let's see if I can. I got this thing where I accidentally rotated and I forgot to turn off the rotation. Thing, um. Lock the rotation. Alright, I'm gonna go with this, and like that, come on. You know, you want to do it. Sometimes software doesn't want to play with you. Cause it, it, it's correct on my screen, um it's just for some reason this. Tickler, oh, it might be because I'm sitting in this app, okay. I do that, there we go, can I go back like this, there we go. Aha, and now I can make it bigger, sorry about that, yeah. It's, it's, it's not the app, the C star thing, it's the app I'm using to show it on my computer to do this, anyway. So here you can sort of see, this is the uh, one of the Veiled Nebulas.
Yep.
Here, um. And again, you can sit down, you can process it with all the images and you can get a much better image. But if you hand this to somebody and they image it for like probably half an hour or so. Um, if you go longer, it gets a lot better, um but you can then see the field rotation kicking in. Um, I just, I did this night, cause I realized that I could do it and the field rotation wouldn't really affect the nebula itself. Um, so I got lucky on that one, um.
What file format does C star state, state uh options, what are the options to save as?
So the options to save are, go here and advanced features. Did it say here or is it somewhere else? Save each feature after this, um, so it does save them as um fits, I'm pre- pretty sure it was fits.
Interesting.
Yeah, they're fits, coming out of the C star, just double check that. Uh, I have it here on my other screen, um. Telescopes. C star S fifty and it kicks out. Fits, yeah. Um, it, it kicks out fits and it kicks out a JPG.
Okay.
Um, so if I. Have one here, I don't know what the heck I'm pointing at. Oh, that's not, be a pain in the butt for everybody to see, but yeah, it kicks out like a fit file.
Right.
Graham, is the tablet controlling the C star through wifi, uh local wifi?
So there's a couple options you can do, so number one, normal, normal operation, like as it comes out of the box, is it'll connect, you download the app. Um, you tap on it, you say connect to C star, it connects through Bluetooth. And then it'll connect to the C star using the C star's own wifi um hub. So the C star, you'll connect to, like it's like C E O da 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 or C three O. Budget letters, um and you'll connect to that wifi and your tablet, so just be. Your, the C star and your tablet will be on their own wifi and you can control it that way, okay? What you can do though is you can go to, it's called station mode. Um, and you can go here to wifi, yeah, so. It's wifi password is S fifty underscore C E C this, but you have station mode, which is right here. And this is my home station, so I've logged in to my wifi using, you just type it in. And then the C star will connect to your wifi and since your iPad's connected to the same wifi, you can control it remotely. Like right now, these are outside, um and I'm going through my wifi hub and these are outside imaging live right now.
So that.
And how?
Sorry, you both were talking at the same time.
So I'm just asking, how reliable is the Bluetooth and wifi connection, does it drop any connections at all?
I have never, okay, so. I've never seen it drop connection once it has it, like obviously the farther away you are from. The wifi hub, the less happy it is, like it's sitting outside my house, but it's sitting outside my house about, I'd say eight to nine feet away from the wifi hub. Which is inside my house about, so I would say the wifi hub is probably less than fifteen feet away. From the C star, and then I'm over here on the side of the house which has wifi.
Okay, thank you.
Your limitations on, more on the C star um range. Then say the iPad or your phone or whatever, which does better for wifi. So, uh but once it's connected, it works fine, and I, I haven't had any issues with controlling it, et cetera, cause it's not moving. Your wifi hub isn't moving, the only reason it disconnects is if you walk out of the wifi with your uh I, uh iPad device. Or if you're using Android, same thing, walk outside, um but like I've streamed for hours and no problems. Um.
Does the C star have login or credentials of some kind?
No, so you just log in and it goes. Now, the first person to log in controls it, anyone else who tries to log in afterwards, they get stuck in guest mode, which is they can watch, but they can't control.
How many connections does it allow?
I have no idea, um but um.
You think it would allow a dozen?
It could, um I don't have a dozen devices on me to try this. Uh, I can ask them how many devices can connect to it, um cause like I can talk to the reps. Um, and see what the maximum is, but like I've had like uh three things connected at once, um without any issue.
Interesting, okay.
Yeah, but um, yeah, no, like um, when I started up today, I had the, this one was connected to the C star. And then when I connected up the other one, it kicked into guest mode and I had to kick it out of guest mode to log into the second one. Cause it was on the same wifi, so um that's how you get the two at the same time on the same wifi. Um, but you'd be, otherwise you'd be in guest mode and I'd have to, you know, does that, um.
So I assume the guest mode is, which may allow five or ten other people with their phones. Look at what you're looking at at the same time.
Yeah, exactly, they just need to have the C star app on their phone, they go in, they go click connect and then they connect to it. Um, it's very straightforward, um but I think it has to be. Um, cause it's through Bluetooth to get the connection, I think only one person connect at a time. And then once they go to the wifi, then next person connect, go to the wifi, cause it connects with the Bluetooth and then it kicks you to the wifi. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay.
A little bit, little bit.
In the uh, in the chat, uh Kim said that there were eight connections.
Oh, there we go, thank you, Kim.
Great.
Yeah, I, I don't have them here with me, um but if I, I do it like, this is the C star S fifty box. And when you open it up, um got little things here, bold it's. It opens up like this, uh there's room for the C star S fifty and then there's room for the tripod up here and then there's the. Uh, solar filter that comes with it that you can just sort of put in here, um and it kind of just sits there. That's just a fifty box and this is a comparison for size. This is the S thirty box, it's a lot smaller. And it has space in it for um the S thirty and then the little tripod that comes with it. Um, and then they have a little pocket here where you can see the uh solar filter, it's sitting.
How do you like them?
Um, I like them a lot, they make this ridiculously easy. Um, they work well, they're very reliable, um they basically are point and shoot like. Um, the only tricky thing that you need to do is make sure that they're on level ground. Um, if you're using the provided uh tripods, because they don't um correct for level, um. But um, yeah, if you want to do equatorial mode, as I said, the fake equatorial mode is you just angle it. Uh, and point it so the top of it's pointing at uh Laris. Um, and it does work, uh if you point it up. Beyond eighty degrees, um looking up in alt as mode, so if you were to go and say, I want to image. We're gonna, oh, it's gonna load the, alright. Apparently I haven't updated, they keep pushing updates, so sometimes uh it updates the uh. Um, star map or something like this every time, so it's not every time, but I haven't used this in like three weeks, but let's say we're looking at the moon. Um, it works great, but if you were to go say up to here. Um, or higher, um you'll lose a lot of frames. If you want to get like a lot of imaging um in alt as mode, cause it, it, it's, it's rotating and it loses stars. Whereas if you're down here or you're better yet, like around, um I guess, I think it's forty degrees, yeah, forty degrees, it's really happy, so like. If you're to go and say image um Orion right now, it'd be very happy to image Orion and not lose any front subs, assuming you know. No clouds or anything else like that's going across, um so that works well, again in alt as mode or not in equatorial mode, um. You lose anything that's below, um. Cause you're rotating up forty five degrees, so you wouldn't be able to like image anything in this uh constellation, cause it would be too low. Um, if you just tilted it sideways, so that's why they're trying to make an actual equatorial mode, cause then they'll actually try to image stuff at the ground. Um, there's that. Uh, but yeah, no, they're really easy to use, um, they're, they do a nice job, um. I don't know if there's any other questions on these things, um other than saying that uh they're both ten eighty P, um so your resolution isn't. Um, super high on these things, um compared to like a dedicated astro camera would be. Um, cause ten eighty P is basically, I think, four megapixels. Um, so, uh and again, as I said, like if we look at, since I have it, where that, oh, it's over here, haha. We zoom in here. Like if you want to image Pleiades, you can do that, and if we go here and we find Pleiades. This is probably the best way to show it to you, that's the different, that's the different framing. That you get between the two, and I think that's the big difference between the two of them is that. The S fif- I like the S thirty a little bit more than the S fifty, just cause the framing's a little bit bigger. So for beginning targets, it actually captures more of them. Um, and you can get the whole thing in frame, whereas the S fifty is a lot better for those beginner intermediate targets. Where you might want to spend a little bit more time on, um. Because you have that ten eighty P resolution, but it's just a little bit more cropped in, um so you get a little bit better image out of it. And the S fifty being a wider aperture, obviously. Um, it does a better picture over time, I haven't done my side by side comparison yet, because it's been cloudy since I got the S thirty. So, that's my next.
Maybe tomorrow.
Oh, tomorrow, I'm, I'm, I've, I, I've been talking to Yon and um Romania about which targets we're going, so we don't. Waste our time getting the, the same ones, except for where we plan to bridge the data, um, cause he also has these, so um, yeah. Um, tomorrow is, I'm hoping, gonna be a really good night, even though the moon's up.
Awesome, does anyone have any other questions for Graham?
I have a question.
Sure.
Can you hear that?
Yep, we can hear you, Bruce.
Okay, um, I was just wondering, does it, um, just from, uh, you know, I do a lot of. When I'm doing imaging, I'm often imaging from camera and raw. And I'm just wondering, um, is it, would it be a reasonable question to ask if uh. You can do that in the C star or, or is it only JPG or?
No, no, it's, it's, it does fit, here, I'll show you what you get. So. Go here, S fifty, okay, so if, if you were to connect to the C star directly, you'd end up with basically. Um, this, my works and dark library. Dark library has your master dark fit, um you can always update it um in the app and it'll create another one. Uh, this is for ten seconds, cause that's what I was doing back then. Um, you go to my works and it comes up with a folder structure like this. So if you go to say I see um three forty two, it's gonna show you um the images that you took. And hopefully it's gonna open, it's gonna end up being kind of small thumbnail, um, well, let's actually pick one where I actually did a decent job. Um. Hang on here, what's the, oh, now it's gonna do that now, I mean, great. Apologies, I just gotta get to, let's do here, okay. Let's pick something, okay, here we are. So. It's gonna do, no, is this just open the same thing like it's, it's a pile? One second, apologies, everybody, I do not know why my computer hates me right now. I want to open this one, okay, so you're gonna get um out of it. Is basically a JPG of the image that you took, okay, and this is stacked in the C star.
Yeah.
Okay, you're also gonna get the um, I open this up hopefully, you're gonna get the bit file for it. Okay, and I did it on several nights, so you're gonna get um several nights worth of this. Um, that I was imaging on several nights, cause I want to stack them all together, but you also get. This uh secondary folder called um goes dash subs. And this has your biases, your darks, your fat, flat, flats, your lights, all that fun stuff that you want. And this has your biases, your darks, your fat, flat, flats, your lights, all that fun stuff that you want. And it's for every single image that you took, it kicks out a. A J, a small little JPG thumbnail, so you can easily see what it is, and then it kicks out a whole uh, fit uh, file.
So Graham, those are the files that were stacked?
No, these are the, these are the each subs.
That's what I'm saying, those subframes are the files that were stacked.
The ones I showed you.
No, no.
Okay.
I'm not.
Sorry, so this is an individual file.
Folder of files that you are here right now.
Yeah.
This is the, on, was live stacked in C star.
So. I I think I know what you're asking, so the first folder, this was stacked by C star.
No, that's, that's the resulting stacked image.
Yeah, and because I did it each night.
Folder that you showed me before were the subframes that went into the stack.
Correct, so if you go to this one, this is all the s- the subframes and you can keep scrolling and it just saves all them in one giant folder.
Bruce, do you understand the FIT format?
Uh, okay, so.
Do you understand FIT files?
Your answer is no.
So FIT are the equivalent of RAW.
RAW, okay, sorry, yeah, so FIT, FIT, FIT are the RAW files.
Well, that's excellent.
Okay, um, now, the only thing you have to do is you have to go into the settings and turn this on. So if I pull up one of these, uh, which one am I on, I'm on this guy over here, okay, so. If you go here to advanced features, it says save each frame for enhancing. So you just, so by default, when it shows up, it's turned off, which is a really annoying thing. You tap, now it's gonna save every single sub you take, if you didn't, it would only save the uh, stacked, um, from that imaging session. So you turn that, you press that button on and it saves every single image separately on on your C star.
Have you found you're getting any close to the storage limit in the C star?
Um. I think I, right now I've got thirty-two gigabytes free. Um, but I think I already copied a lot of stuff off of it, um, so. Yeah, I prob- I I think I copied about half of what the C star had on there off. Um, when I was doing, um, some multiple nights where I was just having it go, 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 go. Um, and then like when it was doing video, I had a video for like four hours or something stupid like that when I was trying, testing things, um, but I don't like. You'd be hard pressed to go through this for probably three months, if you were like out every night. Would be my take, and then you can just copy it off, it's very easy to copy it off, um, you just plug it into your computer and you go copy. And it sits there and it copies the files off, so it's not like you're gonna use fifty-eight gigabytes of data in one night or two nights or three nights.
But you need a computer to copy it.
Well, you can copy it onto your, um, mobile device if you're connected, but it's gonna like.
But you have to be the primary person, right, like, like, let's say I'm doing outreach and and I've got, uh. Eight people connected as, and I'm I'm the person that's in control. And some of those people want a copy of that image of the sun that we just took, um.
Okay, give me a second to try that, because I have it here, I just have to, um, go to this and. I think I just go, no, that's slide thing, which one do I do to, you know what, I'm just gonna knock the app out, but. It definitely locks me out, and we go back here and go C star. Is it gonna connect to? It wants to, um. You know what, I'm just, I'm gonna shut down this one, okay. And I can connect, it's gonna be upset, that's fine. It's gonna search for the other one now. Hoping. Yeah, there goes S fifty, it's connect the S fifty. Oh, right, you have to be close to it to turn it on. Should do it, anyway. I had it connected earlier. I I I understand what you're saying, so, um.
Oh, we can play around with it.
Yeah, um, because it can see it, so. It should be happy to connect it, but it is set outside and across the house, normally I just connect it up when I'm holding it in my hand, so.
Yeah. Or should you be acting to it through your network, is it connected to the, is is it in the?
No, it's it's, it's it's in the network, it's just for some reason it wants to try to do it where it's trying to say the. Because normally when I turn these on, I'm holding them, I turn them on, then I put them outside.
Yep.
So I'm I'm standing right beside it when I turn it on.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Yeah, so it probably needs to be beside it when you turn it on to do that, so either A, I could just walk outside and try it for ten seconds.
And that's the little Bluetooth piece before you switch to the network piece?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it connects Bluetooth and then it switches to the, um, network, and then once the network is connected. Um, you can walk, walk around as long as you're within the wifi, um, radius, you're fine, um. Because I had it connected, I had the two of the phones connect, I had both, I had the iPhone, I had the iPad and the phone connected before, before I turned on the S thirty and switched it over. Um, but uh, yeah, um, there probably is a way of getting it off there, I don't know, uh, but the other thing too is that, um. I I'll be honest, you can just go, like, you press your thing and take a screen capture.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's ten eighty P, so it's not gonna be any higher resolution than what's on your screen.
Mm-hmm.
Like, if that makes sense, for modern stuff, if you have an older phone, obviously.
Want to just share it with your friends or whatever?
Yeah, exactly, um, so. Yeah, so they they work great, um, to give you an idea of battery power, the S fifty was charged at the starting of the meeting. At about ninety-five and the S thirty, which is now dead, uh, because I turned it off, uh, was at fifty percent, so they. They they lose a little bit of power over time, but they they run for quite some time. And again, they are USB C, so if you have like a USB C battery and you want to run it for a long time, you just plug it into the computer and away you go. Does that make sense? Like you can just plug in like a battery, USB C, and it can run, or you plug it into the mains, then it'll run forever. Um, kind of thing, um, they do have it where, as I said, they're coming out with, um. Uh, the most, like, there's the mosaic mode, there's, um, talk of coming out with a, um, test plan mode. Um, that's in beta testing right now, um, so that you can set up the C star and say, I want you to image this then and this then and this and this. And you leave it and it'll just. Go all night and do it automatically, um, so that's apparently being tested. The mosaic mode is where you say I want to do a mosaic and it'll basically image a mosaic automatically for you. Um, so.
Does it stitch for you too?
Sorry, what?
Does it stitch it too?
Yes, it does stitch it, um, I've done one somewhere, I don't know which target I was playing around with. So I should have one stitched on here, or I may have copied it off the, onto the computer already.
That gets tricky with the rotation.
Yeah, well, that's that's what i- it's, there's a limit to how much it can stitch, so. I'm just wondering if there's a way of seeing, oh, I'm, because I'm on the other thing, okay.
Does it choose the overlap or do you choose the overlap?
Um, when I was, when I was testing it, um, it chose the overlap. So, um, do I, oh, there it is, okay, and why is this off? Hang on, my bad, pardon me, I didn't realize, I put the pads down, turn them off, so disconnected from the. It's a, it's gonna reconnect. Then I can show you what it looks like, okay, is it happy? Okay, there we go, aha, so that's what it does, um.
Okay, so it's a stack for a a mosaic of a few frames?
So this is a two-hour mosaic of the uh, Veil Nebula. Um, that I did, and again, it has the mosaic. And then if you look here, it's got all the subs for the mosaic and these are all, you know, your RAW files, so.
So do you get a, do you get a sense of how many panels it uses to make that or does it just go?
Um, it just went, as for how many panels it used, um, it used four hundred and forty-eight. So forty, oh.
Frames, like.
Oh, um, I have no idea, it didn't show me when I was doing the test, um, in the, um.
No worries.
Beta, it it just basically, it showed me was sort of this, this larger framing, so when I expanded it outward.
Yep.
In, and I kind of made it big and then I rotated the frame, like again, in that sky app, I just sort of rotated, made it bigger. Uh, and I, then I said, go.
Okay.
Um, so it's, as I said, it it, um. The nice thing about the C star is it's very user friendly, very, you know, point like, um, stuff like this. The downside to it is that it doesn't give you a lot of control or options. Um, the same way as you can with like, you know, your regular telescopes and stuff, but again. If you're somebody new, if you're using it, like I said, you're gonna have these in the, um. Um, for beginners and for people to maybe borrow if they're new users, something like this, it's really easy to use.
Yeah.
Uh, one one question if I can ask, who sells these, who's the?
This is Z W O.
Oh, so right from Z W O.
Yeah, they 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 have, they have a company called C star, but it's Z W O C star, like if I. Get the box.
Yeah, astronomy stores are selling them.
Yeah, yeah, you can get, yeah.
Canada telescopes would sell it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, no, no, this is a Z W O product, if I hold it the right spot, and you can see.
What's the rough cost for this?
Um. Yeah, somebody said it, I think.
I'm sorry, what?
About six hundred, seven hundred.
Really, yeah, you get a lot for six hundred dollars, don't you?
Yeah, oh, no, as I said, they're they're, um, in in the world of astrophotography, these are dead cheap for what they do, um. Like, e- like, you, like, to buy something and buy like a mount, it's gonna cost you the same amount of money, you have to get the camera. The lens or the telescope and all the other stuff that to make it go and it's like, it it's, you just buy one of these and you're you're good to go.
It's impressive.
They're, like, I've left them out, um, not intentionally, but I've had, uh, snow on the S fifty. I've had light rain and dew, um. Yeah, they're 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 pretty well built too, so I don't recommend doing that. But, um, you know, things happen.
Brian, the center's getting one, if you uh, want to try it before you buy one for yourself, that's kind of.
Well, I'm I'm intrigued, actually, I'm intrigued, so that might be something I'd be interested in doing.
Good.
Alright, that's that's all I have unless some.
Well, thanks a lot, Graham, I really appreciate, uh, the time and and the effort and and and, uh, it was very informative. Um, thanks again.
Yep, no problem.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
Stop sharing.
Oops, all right, so, come on. That's pretty, that's pretty much the program for tonight, um, just a reminder, we have a website, Kingston dot RAS dot C A, there's lots of great stuff on there. Um, we have a Facebook group and a YouTube channel, which, uh, I hope the. The meeting is going to, uh, record well and 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 be posted up there and. If you're not a member of the Kingston Center, you are invited to join us at, uh, this website. But basically just go to the R A S C website and, uh. Our next meeting will be, uh, next month at seven o'clock, I will send out. The, uh, uh, information about a week before the meeting. And that's everything I have for tonight, thanks everyone for joining us, I hope you enjoyed it, have a good night.
Thank you, Malcolm, thank you, Graham, that was really interesting, thanks. Good night, everyone.
Thank you. Okay, bye.